Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, August 13, 2018. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner: First, on January 9, 2018, the copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News; Second, on January 9, 2018, the copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell; Third, on January 9, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armata?
Present.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens has been excused. Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Posh?
Here.
Mr. San Clemente has been excused. Mr. Orozco?
Here.
Mr. Moretti?
Here.
Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we all stand for the Pledge Allegiance, please?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution, and to the Constitution of the Republic, and to the Constitution of Liberty, Justice, and All.
Mr. Tropoli, may I swear in the professionals, please?
Neil.
Thank you, sir. Approval of minutes. Regular meeting, July 9, 2018. Eligible voters: Armata, Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Orozco, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Armata, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armata?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Vouchers?
We have no vouchers this evening.
Correspondence?
I do have correspondence.
Okay.
The first item is a letter from Attorney William Wenzel. He is the attorney for Route 9 Hardscape Supply Yard LLC. They have an application before the board this evening. He asked that we please... They are going to revise the plans. They haven't been submitted to the township professionals for their review. In addition, our planner has not completed his assessment of the project. Accordingly, we are requesting that the matter be adjourned and rescheduled for November 26, 2018, and they consent to the continuation of the hearing in this matter through December 31, 2018.
If I could add into that a little bit, I want to give the board a little bit of history on this site. So, long before I was even here, my predecessors had issued a violation in July of 2015 on the property for an expansion of a non-conforming use. When I did come on... When I came to the township, Lili Lu Texer, who was the interim land use officer, she started cleaning up some old cases, and this was one of them. So, we met with them, the applicant and his attorney, on December 1, 2016, brought up the violation again, told them what they had to do. They made an application finally in June 2017, so about six months for variance application. We kind of, you know, accept that. We understand it takes some time. That was in June of last year. So, now we're over a year with resubmissions. There was a time when it was deemed incomplete by Eileen. There were several times it was deemed incomplete by T&amp;M. Every time that they owed the township more documents, we had to issue a violation telling them, "You have two weeks to get us what we need, or we're going to write you a summons. We're going to take you to court." Usually, it took until the day of for them to give us what they needed. So, now we've come into several more meetings. They were scheduled April 9, May 21, and then tonight, all being carried based on the letter that Eileen just read. Their planner hasn't reviewed the plans yet. They've revised the plans again, and they got us those last Thursday.
They actually came the same day that I got the letter, and I offered the attorney because the plans didn't look that much different to me. It looked like they added a photo, and that was it. And I said, "Jack would get you a letter by today if you want to still be heard on Monday." And he said, "No, I want to be carried because my planner has to do something."
So, this is a seasonal business that's benefiting from their expansion, and it's been almost three years. So, my recommendation, and totally up to the board, is if they don't... If they're not ready for the next meeting, and if everything in their power is not done, that we think about taking some action, maybe dismissing without prejudice. That allows me to then take code enforcement. I can issue... At this point, it would be immediate summons to court, and it would also require a new notice and a new application to be made to come back.
Mr. Tropoli, I have a legal question. What is the statute of limitations on a summons?
On a summons?
Probably stayed.
What's that?
No summons has been issued, just notice of violations.
Yeah, but if they got a notice for violation, what is the statute of limitations on that notice of violation?
I don't believe there is one.
I think it's stayed pending this.
Right. It's exactly right. So, it would be stayed, but, you know, echoing what I'm hearing from Mr. Howard, now we've been carried on the record for over six months, so I have a concern about notice.
I think it's more than that, wouldn't it be?
Well, I'm just looking to see when it started here. It started May 21, and now we're looking to carry it till November.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, wouldn't it three years ago that it started?
That was the process that started with us in the office.
I know, but they were told they needed to come to the board three years ago.
But in terms of, you know, honoring the public and giving the public the information, it's been in front of the board, and again, thank you for correcting me, in April of this year. So, if the board looks favorably upon carrying it to the date that's requested, I think that what should be done is that there be a new notice sent to all the property owners because we're losing control, and not only that, but make it very clear that, as Matt said, I would absolutely support a dismissal without prejudice if they're not ready to go on this final adjourned date.
But you're in November. That's the end of the season. They're done.
That gives them what they want. It gives them time.
They operate year-round. The idea is to at least get them in as soon as possible. Let's put it this way. You know, if it has to be in November, that's a drop-dead date, and that's it. But let them make a new notice.
Why can't tonight be the drop-dead date?
You know, I just think notice... Look, to be honest with you, notice, and I don't want to say due process, but bottom line is that we should put them on notice of what the board's intentions are, which would be, you know, obviously, they've sent the letter, they're not here, they don't have the opportunity to be heard. So, my recommendation, though, Mr. Chair, is to renotice and make it very clear that if they're not ready to go the next time, a dismissal without prejudice, and that's it.
Jennifer, I'm going to ask you a question. Have you seen the revised plans?
I have not.
Matt, have you seen the revised plans?
Yes.
Charles?
I think you might have them with you tonight, Jen. They might be.
Okay. Was everything that we had requested at the last meeting, was that on the plans?
No, they added some additional information regarding the buffer, I think, for the property, some grading, spot grades, and stuff like that, but...
But what about any...
I had advised... I had a conversation with Bill Kurtz, the engineer. He called me, and my recommendation was that he needed to coordinate with Sherri because a lot of the issues that we had on the site was the additional clearing beyond the initial limits, which would go directly to her, which she brought up in her letter, and so I said, "You need to coordinate with her to get that tree clearing situation under control." I don't know what has transpired with that.
Okay, so, we don't know if Sherri has been spoken with?
I have no idea.
Okay.
Do they have a new attorney on that application?
No, it's the same attorney.
Same attorney we met with several years ago.
I thought it was Tom Hirsch.
No, he's for Seafree Plaza.
That's our next application. That's a different one.
We'll get to his letter in a minute.
Okay. I'm not sure if, you know, I'm very new at this, and we're trying to formulate all this stuff, but wasn't there containers involved in this, also on his property?
There's open...
Storage containers that we were trying to get them to resolve?
I think the open storage materials in the back.
Yeah.
It's not containers. I don't think it's containers. It's bins.
Oh, just the bins? Okay, that's real easy. Yeah, but that's where they store material, and it's in the buffer. It's in the stream corridor buffer. Right. And...
I mean, ideally, we'd have them a lot sooner than November, but we're just that booked that.
No, I can understand that, but, you know, we shouldn't even be going there. You know, we shouldn't even be having to go to that. He was told he needed a planner at the last meeting, and he still does not have a planner. He still does not have a planner.
Apparently, they do, but they haven't brought whoever it is into the fold yet.
It's still... That doesn't matter.
I agree.
According to me...
I agree.
My whole contingency is, is they were told to deal with the excessive clearing, and if it hasn't been addressed on the plan, which we don't know if it has or not, you know, until we speak with Sherri, knowing that it is, I don't know how, you know, I don't know.
Right.
And I don't want to issue another date at this point in time because we're going to have to renotice anyway. I'd rather wait till the next meeting to where we can meet with Sherri and find out if her concerns were answered in this plan, because if that's not, and they come here again, it's just going to be postponed again. Can we wait till the next meeting to assign a new date if we carry it?
Well, is the board satisfied with, no matter what, it has to be renoticed?
Oh, absolutely. Well, in my opinion, yes.
Well, if that's the case, then yes, you can... The board secretary can be directed to tell the applicant, no matter when it comes back, it's going to have to be renoticed by request of the board, and we're going to carry it to the 27th of August.
Yeah, for scheduling and purpose only.
Okay.
Even at that, it's either going to be, we're going to have a drop-dead date on the next...
August 30. So, let's do that. Put the pressure on them and keep it that way. And then if they come forward with a proffer, then it'll be up to the board.
Well, I don't want to put them on the schedule for the 27th.
Well, that would be for a status check because you're not granting them. Their expiration date is August 30.
He granted me an extension of time.
Yeah, okay, on the 27th, we'll make a decision.
We have an extension.
Through the end of the year, I have an extension in the letter.
Yeah, well, if we don't grant them to November, then we, you know, is that extension still good?
It's up to you. I mean, he gives you... The extension is, you have time to act, right?
Correct.
Under the statute. So, the extension is giving you additional time to act. You're not obligated to carry them. So, I agree with Ron. You carry them to the next date certain, under the strict consequence that if you don't show up or you ask to be carried again, you are getting dismissed.
Well, my whole thing is, why do we have to wait to November? Why can't we make a decision after speaking with Sherri? If they have not addressed her concerns...
Well, I mean, I can find out from her while we're here whether she's...
Well, if you could, can we put this off till the end of the meeting?
Sure.
Because, you know, I'm going to poll the board right now. You know, if they haven't addressed any of those concerns from the last meeting, why are we carrying them? You know, it just shows that they're not moving forward with what they're supposed to be doing. So, they're wasting our time, they're wasting our professionals' time.
They're tying up our calendar.
And we can't do this, you know? You know, it's either a drop-dead or we go to November. But I would like to know if they addressed those issues, Sherri, and the concerns that Sherri got.
I just shot her off a text, so when she gets back to me, I'll let you know.
Because according to Matt, they only added a picture to the drawing, and that's what they're changing, so...
There was a little bit more added. They did show the buffer in the rear of the property. They did add some spot grading to show kind of the topography and how, you know, the water curse flows on the property, but, you know, I think...
But did they move the bins, or did they show...
No, I don't believe the location has been changed.
That's in the stream corridor? You know, that's in a buffer to the stream there?
That's probably one of the packages I left you tonight. Yeah, it only came in last Thursday. No, I have... Maybe I haven't. Ron might have it.
Now, am I out of line, Mr. Tropoli? I would be careful, Mr. Chairman, in doing anything by way of a dismissal tonight or anything like that. I think I would be more comfortable...
Sherri just said they have not reached out to her.
And it's just a one sheet of plan. That's all it is.
I would be more comfortable with them providing some kind of a status letter by the next meeting and then deferring your decision. I mean, carrying it to the next meeting because no matter what's going to happen...
Right.
But have Eileen just write a letter telling him what is needed.
Okay.
And if we carry it to November...
I would just remind him to listen to the minutes or go on our website.
We don't want to tell him, or at least in my opinion, we shouldn't be directing him what to do, but just indicate that the professionals are here, are not in a position to advise the board because of the deficiency in their submission, and carry it to the 27th.
Okay.
And have them prepare a written response for the board. But again, I think to entertain a dismissal at this point in time, I would have...
Let's carry it to the 27th, then we'll make a decision at that time.
But make it clear in whatever Eileen will send on behalf of the board that no matter what date it goes to, it has to be renoticed, and that's the penalty.
Okay.
With an understanding, if it's not ready the next time, then the board will entertain a motion to dismiss.
But see, they have not... They have not responded to what the required... What the professionals requested at the meeting that they were here. That's why we shut the meeting down.
I understand.
Was because they were not prepared, and there was issues they were not prepared to answer.
I think this makes the position of the board very clear in writing, and they're on notice. It's up to DEFCON 2, going to DEFCON 1, if you know what I mean. And this way, they know, and that's what I would say.
Okay.
That would be my advice. If they don't address the professionals' comments, and they don't have their ducks in a row, when they... Even if they do come for their hearing, then, you know, the board will have their opportunity to comment on what's missing, and that may weigh in on the decision overall.
Yeah, but see, the thing about it is, Matt, they can ask for adjournment. They'll get back here, they don't have the information in here, and then they'll ask for adjournment that's going to put us into 2019.
Well, it's easy to ask for an adjournment when you're in for a violation, so you can continue to operate. You're not waiting for something.
I know. That's what I'm saying.
Right. You're allowed to just continue to operate illegally while you continue asking...
That's what I'm saying. This has been going on since 2015. You know, the same thing. 2015, this has been going on. And we have another place in town that's doing the same thing, you know, in... I don't know. You know, so, we'll give them to the 27th, just like Mr. Tropoli. Does that sound good with the board? I'd like for you guys to weigh in on this.
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. Chairman, the 27th is not to be here for a hearing, just a status report.
That's correct.
And then, once we get the status report, then we make our decision.
That's right.
And it'll be noticed in the meantime.
Yes.
And then I'm in agreeance with that.
Okay. The concerns of the board would be... Yes.
Do you have any other concerns with it? I would like to hear from Sherri on this, and I mean, in writing, from Sherri, something in writing from Sherri.
I'll let her know.
You know, by the next meeting, and, you know, that way, you know, we have a decision. But these concerns were, at our April meeting that we had, they were brought up, and they were requested specifically, and we went through every professional on the board. What is your requirements of this application? And every professional put their requirements on, including Sherri. Jack put his own, Matt his, also Jennifer, you know, the issues they have with the application. And they were supposed to address those issues before tonight's meeting, period. And, you know, we'll do a status, as Mr. Tropoli said. Eileen, you know, you can work Mr. Tropoli on proper wording to send out, and then we'll just go from there, if that's good with the board.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Jennifer, can you tell me, were they required by the board to get, or by Matt, to get an LOI?
Yes, they were.
And did they get it?
I haven't seen anything.
Because we need to get that, and if they don't have it, we can't even proceed with their case. So, that should be one of the conditions, too.
Well, I don't want to put additional conditions that weren't spoken of.
Typically, an outside agency could be done as a condition.
Correct.
That's true.
But is that good, Ron?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Board members, are y'all good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, I'll work with Eileen on preparing correspondence, send it out, letting the... Here he comes. Letting the applicant know where they stand and to be sure that he has a letter in before the 27th, period.
Okay. Mr. San Clemente, welcome aboard. You've got to say that you pledge allegiance first.
Okay.
Let the record reflect it. Mr. San Clemente is here, 7:55.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just a question, because like I said, I'm new at this here. What do you exactly mean by a status? Did they come in and say, "Well, we have everything that you want done. We have a plan for it." That's the status?
Well...
Or, "Oh, we're still working on this, this, and this." That's not a status.
That's not a status, no.
Okay. I'm for that.
What it boils down to, at the last meeting, they were being heard, they were going through testimony, they had their... You know, they only have one professional. That's correct, right? One professional?
I think it was just the attorney. He didn't bring his engineer.
He didn't have anybody.
So, we just...
He did.
The applicant.
Okay. The applicant was sworn in. There was somebody sworn in, if I'm...
The owner, maybe, of the place.
But all of this was brought up at the meeting, and the attorney was... We went... Each professional told them what they needed to come back with for tonight's meeting. Or actually, there was another meeting scheduled, and they adjourned it.
They actually were scheduled in April, and their notice was deficient, which the way their whole application is, I'm not sure that it wasn't done that way on purpose, but...
Right.
Then they were scheduled for May. They came in May, and their attorney was not here, and then they were carried to tonight, correct?
No, we heard testimony from them.
In May, but only from the owner, yes.
Yes, okay. So, you know, they were told what they needed, and then now, tonight, they didn't get... The professionals didn't get the plans until Thursday last week, and they, according to what I'm hearing, I haven't seen it, but there's only one picture added to the deal, and nothing was addressed what was addressed at the board that they needed. That's the whole gist of it, so...
I got it.
And then now they want to carry to November. You know, I just... We'll get a status, and then we'll make a decision next meeting. Next correspond... Oh, let me read that one real quick. Case number BA-17-08, Route 9 Hardscape Supply. It's a used variance. They asked to be carried, but this will be carried to our next meeting for a status, and we'll make the decision at our next meeting, if there's anyone in the audience for that case. Eileen?
Thank you. Yes, my next letter is from Thomas Hirsch. He is the attorney for Seafree Plaza. They were also preparing new plans. They had a meeting with the board planner and the engineer. However, they want to make sure the full plans are on file 10 days before the hearing, so they have asked if they could be carried to September the 17th, and they also granted an extension of time through the end of September.
The difference on this case is I have no code violations.
What's that?
I have no code violations against them, so...
And that's Seafree Plaza?
Seafree Plaza. And I will represent that they did come and meet with me in my office about the architecture, which I thought was great, so... And they made some changes to the site plan, which I know they met with your office.
Yeah, they met with Jack. They went over making sure that they had circulation around the entirety of the building for fire access, so...
They made serious changes, so...
Well, you know, we had left it in your guys' hands, so...
And so I think they just want to make sure all their ducks in a row before they come back, but I will say that from what I saw and the representations that I heard from Charlie's office, is that they're actually working in the right direction.
Okay. Well, honestly, I didn't think they were... I think we voted on that.
No, we kicked them to the curb.
We did.
I kicked them to the curb early.
Yeah, I remember that.
The presentation was a little sloppy, and we were redesigning on the fly, and so we carried them, and they have to come back.
I thought, though, we did the vote.
Nope.
They were voted on years ago, back in 2016.
No.
No, I remember that.
Not on this time. There was no vote. We stopped it before it even got anywhere close to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Todd Cohen, correct?
No, Thomas Hirsch.
Thomas Hirsch.
Yes.
Okay, I'm getting cases mixed up here.
We... That's a associate business park that we voted on.
This is one on Highway 33 in Oakerson Road.
But it's... But it's, yeah, it's on Oakerson Road.
Right, yeah, we kicked... They had the two buildings.
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay. So, are they gonna... Is it going to be a single tenant now, or is it...
No, but they've resolved a lot of our issues.
They did?
Yes.
They had issues with the fire emergency.
They provided access around the full building, and they have an actual loading zone that will provide...
For the one building not happening to go through the warehouse.
Yep.
Correct. Okay, good. Okay. Anyone here for case number BA-17-15, Seafree Plaza LLC? Seeing no hands, this case will be carried till?
September 17, 2018.
September 17, 2018, with or without further notice?
It's up to the board.
Mr. Tropoli?
Well, I would recommend without further public notice.
Okay, without further notice. Okay, next one?
The next one is from Jason Riddy. He is the attorney for Cream Puff Farms. And basically, they are withdrawing their application without prejudice. They've located and purchased a piece of property in a different municipality, which will allow their business operations. Therefore, they will not be operating a business from the subject property in Howell Township.
Okay. Matt?
I mean, that, that solves the code violation, and we're gonna go out and double check. We're gonna keep an eye on the property for several months to make sure that nothing looks like no commercial activities taking place. And, you know, that's fine by us.
Okay.
And that is all the correspondence I have.
Okay. I don't need to announce anything with that, other than it's just being withdrawn without prejudice. Okay. Resolutions. Case number BA 18-09, Associate Business Park. Resolution, this is what I was thinking about. Resolution granting used variance and preliminary and final major site plan approval. Eligible voters are Amada, Martin, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Moretti, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Amada. Can we have a roll call, please?
If you may. Mr. Amada?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number BA 18-12, Howell Baptist Church, Inc. Resolution granting signed variance approval. Eligible voters are Amada, Martin, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Moretti, and Nansen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Amada.
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Moretti. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Amada?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you.
Case number BA 0420X2, James R. Intel. Resolution granting six-month extension of time. Eligible voters are Amada, Martin, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Moretti, and Nansen.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Amada. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Amada?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on. Applications before the board. Case number BA 18-13, William P. Stapleton. Bulk, bulk variance in dwelling, for a dwelling addition. Application of William P. Stapleton as applicant, and William P. and Courtney W. Stapleton as owner seeking bulk variance approval to construct an addition on their house on a non-conforming lot known as Block 154 12.01 333 West Farms Road. Expiration date, September 18th, 2018. Come forward, sir.
Yes, sir. Sir, would you remain standing? I'll spur you in. Sure. Flip your name on the record, please. Just say the testimony you gave this evening. It'll be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing to be found. I do. You may have a seat. Just place your name on the record.
There, there's a mic right in the middle of the table there.
William Patrick Stapleton.
Yes, sir. Okay, what brings you to the board tonight?
I'd like a variance for an addition of my house.
Okay, um...
Mr. Chairman, you want me to help out here?
Yeah, if you, I, I'll let you take over, Jennifer.
So currently, your, your lot is undersized, correct? And you have no ability to expand your lot, right? Because you're in a developed area? So the lot area, the lot depth, and the lot width, right, which are the variances associated with the lot, are a hardship. And so as a result of the fact that there's no ability, because he's in a developed area, to expand the property, that's a hardship that's outside the control of the applicant and actually is not exacerbated in any way by the application. So we would take no exception to the board granting relief regarding those items because they're hardships under, on an undersized, existing undersized lot.
Okay, that, that's a total square footage, correct?
The to, the lot area, the width, and the depth. Correct.
Okay, now, as far as the front yard, in, that, that's also a variance, correct?
Correct. So currently, there's, in Jack's letter, there are two separate, um, dimensions. One is to the building, and one is to the porch.
Which letter?
Uh, both. So the, in the June 4th letter, and then I think there was a July 30th letter, correct?
July 30th.
So the, those issues have not changed in his letter. So at the end of the day, the existing home is about 8.6. The building, the principal building, is about 8.6 feet from the lot line. However, the covered porch, which is attached to the house, which is part of the principal structure, is 3.6 feet from the lot line.
Right.
This addition is gonna be 6.6 feet from the lot line. So my professional opinion is that the setback relief is 3.6.
Right.
It's, so that's not changing. The addition is going to be behind that porch, correct?
Okay, so...
So in my opinion, the setback, I mean, Ron, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but the porch is attached to the house, so it's part of the principal structure. So the setback currently is 3.6 from the lot line. This is three feet behind that. It's like of two feet in a, forward of the existing house behind the porch, right?
Right.
But the porch itself is 3.6. But it seems to me, based on the pictures, that where the lot line is and where the road is, the road is a little farther.
Yeah, there's a right away.
Correct. So, I mean, just looking at the porch on the picture on the plan, it looks like it's way more than 3.6 feet from the road.
Yeah, it's probably about, I'm trying to figure what I measured it. It's probably about 10 to 12 feet to the actual asphalt from the porch.
From the porch. So this would be behind the porch.
Okay.
So let me ask you a couple of questions.
Yes.
Do you feel that this creates a negative impact on the zone planning and zoning ordinance?
No.
Do you feel that this creates a negative impact to the surrounding properties near your house?
No.
So given the fact that the porch itself is forward of the addition, and that is where the setback is measured, this is not making his existing condition worse. So I would take no exception to the board acting favorably on the application.
Now, I, I just have a few questions. Uh, Richard Road, is that a paper road, or is that a...
No, it's an actual road.
It's an actual road.
Actual road.
Okay, so he, he also has a two...
It's a corner lot, so he does have two front yards.
He does have two front yards, so...
Correct.
Okay. The other question, is the driveway gonna change in any way with this addition?
No.
So the driveway is existing condition. Uh, roof runoff, how are you addressing the roof runoff?
Uh, I've been on the property 15 years. Everything around me drains to my backyard. Nothing leaves the property.
Okay.
I would recommend a drywall.
What's that?
I would recommend a drywall.
That's what I was getting to, is, you know, do you have an issue with putting a drywall in?
Yeah.
To catch the roof frame?
I mean, it's just money.
Yeah, well, not much, but if it does recharge...
I would recommend putting a drywall.
Okay.
I understand. It's a popular thing these days.
Okay. So no, no grade elevation's gonna change, other than just building a...
Terran often building where it, where it sits now.
Any questions from the board? John, any questions? Profes, uh, Charles, do you have any further?
Yeah, I think you guys touched on all the items we noted in our letter. I will just note that we issued a revised letter on the 30th. The applicant did submit revised plans. Our letter was based on those plans. They added a schedule, zoning schedule to the plans as we requested. Um, so, uh, they are addressing our comments. Uh, I think, obviously, the drywells should be required for the stormwater. Uh, just one quick question about the septic system. The plans they submitted with it were dated in 2004. That septic system's been installed, and it's...
That's when I installed it.
Got all Board of Health approvals and everything like that.
And I think there's a letter from the Board of Health saying that as long as they don't add another bedroom, they reach approval for the design.
Correct.
I have nothing further.
And the fence was removed.
Okay, uh, I, let me, as long as you, what did the Board of Health say?
As long as there's no additional bedrooms added associated with the addition, then they're good.
It's approved for up to four bedrooms. The end result of the addition will be a four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bed house, so...
Okay. Oh, okay. Okay, uh, at this point, if there's no further questions of the applicant...
No.
Can I have a motion to open the public?
Make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Moretti.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. If there's anyone, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sorry. Anyone in the public wish to come forward and ask questions or make a comment? Seeing no hands, can I have a motion to close?
Have a motion to close?
Motion by Mr. Moretti.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. San Clemente. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none. Any further comments or questions from professionals or the board?
Nope.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this application and including the, um, drywall. I don't see any reason not to approve it.
I second.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
Seconded by Matt.
No, I know. Is, is Matt your alternate one, right?
No, he's a regular member. He's eligible.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Hey, I'm, I'm lost. Excuse me. Okay, seconded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Amada?
Yes, and I think he's met all the requirements that we, that Jennifer stated.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yeah.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
The, everything that was requested by Mr. Mallon's letter was addressed, the drywall. There's no additional hard, you know, this is a hardship case. You know, he's stuck with...
The majority of the issues is a hardship, is a lot of...
Exactly. And, you know, not only that, the front yard setback is already preexisting. Due to the porch, it's an attached porch. You're not changing. You're not building any closer to the road with the addition. There's no grading change, other than the rooftop, which is being addressed by the drywall, so my vote is yes.
Motion carries.